All right, ladies and gentlemen, I'm going to call this meeting to order the mayor and board of commissioners for August the 8th, 2017. Could I get the roll call, please?
Commissioner Arthur Lee.
Here.
Commissioner Brogdon.
Here.
Commissioner Warnock.
Here.
Commissioner Pearson.
Here.
Mayor Marion.
Here.
Let the record reflect that all the elected body is here.
Will you rise with me for the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will you bow your heads with me for a brief prayer, please? Father God, I come to you tonight on behalf of our town, our citizens, our elected body. I ask for you to watch over us, God, to continue to guide us and protect us. I ask that you watch over our fire, our EMS, our police, as well as our military serving overseas, God. I ask that you be with us as we leave this evening and when we come back together again. Amen. All right, so we are deferring that public presentation. Citizens input. All right, we will move forward into staff reports. Mrs. Wagner.
You're going to find in your book that you have two months. Because of M&amp;L, you missed that one, and then last week, I scheduled something else. If you -- so you're going to have the green and the blue, which is May, and then you're going to see June, which is in red, and you're going to notice the word draft is on it. Normally, we try and not give you these financial statements until we have the -- after we have the audit, but this is pretty close to what the numbers are going to be unless we get a bill between now and the time the auditors get here that we have to accrue. So on page three, you will have your assets. You will see that you have cash and cash equivalent of $220,495.09. You'll notice the cash is slowly getting down, what, in another -- by the end of the month, that will go up significantly because we will get a large percentage of our real estate taxes. The investments are $116,063.33. We have receivables of $62,786.50. Due from other governments, $34,387.80. Due from other funds, which is the proprietary funds, $145,076.90. And then other receivables of $23,467.30. You will see that we still have reserve cash of $48,410.67. And total assets of $650,687.59. You will notice that the accounts payable and accrued expenses are significantly higher than what you're used to seeing, and that has to do with the fact that we've accrued payroll to the end of the year. We've accrued any expenditures that technically we normally would just put into the next month, but if there was a -- an expense where, say, the trash was picked up in June but we didn't get the bill till July, that got accrued back into June. So unrestricted net position is $625,614.75. Any questions about the statement of net position? The next page, which I think you will see, that the total revenue is $2,010,464, and the total expenditures year-to-date for the whole year is $1,584,564.38. We are positive to the expenditures by $425,581.66, and I think that is the best change in net position I've seen since I've been doing this, and I've been doing it for a long time, so that is a positive thing. So we will go to the supplemental information. Anybody have any questions about the statement of activity? I think it's fairly self-explanatory. Then we will go to page eight, which is budget to actual. You will see that we have -- we budgeted to actual is down by $311,419.72. However, and this is probably where we're going to see our biggest change, we all know that the grant money that we're getting from the Parks and Recreation, we actually won't get this year. If we have any expenditures, we will have to go back and accrue some of that, so that might change, but that is a timing issue there and will be pushed, I would think, into the next budget. We are under expenditures, though, by $729,462.92. We had basically a break-even budget last year, and we were in the positive by $425,000, which is not bad. Any questions with regard to budget to actual? If you go to the yellow tab, this is the proprietary funds, and you will see cash and cash equivalent, and this is including the MGLIP, is $1,283,955.18. The receivables is $159,752.91, and that's the receivables for the water and the sewer bills. Prepaid expenditures, this is something that you normally don't see throughout the year, however, there are certain expenditures that we are required to pay ahead of time, and they are not technically part of this year, so they get put in what we call prepaid expense, and that's $3,008.90. Amount due from other funds is $648,155.82. If you took the two differences between the amount due from other funds, which is a receivable when it's above the assets and the liability, you net those two numbers together, you would come out with the amount that's owed to the government fund. Then we have cash and cash equivalent restriction of $616,523.05. And we have net capital assets, which is basically your assets less your depreciation, of $20,982,49.32. And that's, you know, the sewer plant, the wells, all the water lines, and all of that. We get down to the next line, which is accounts payable and accrued expenditure, and the same thing, we have accrued a lot of bills that did not come in the right time period, of Amount due to other government, that is the bay restoration fees, $11,848.74. The long-term debt is $14,731,333.92. The net investment in capital assets is basically your net capital assets, which is $20 million, minus your debt, which is $14 million, so the difference is $6,250,715.40. For unrestricted funds of $2,105,702.05. You have total assets of $23,930, no, $23,401.18. Any questions with the statement of net position? Let's go to page four. So our year-to-date revenue for the water and the sewer is $1,151,464.15. We have spent $1,781,137.90 to be in the hole technically by $629,673.75. And as I remind you all, you really need -- we're not $600,000 cash flow in the negative. We have depreciation of $854,106.77. Any questions there with the statement of revenue expenditure and change in net position? You will then go and see the water budget to actual, which was pretty close. You will then see the sewer budget to actual, and then you will have on page eight, the total budget to actual. Just so you know that the difference between the budget and the actual is the -- the majority of that is the debt service that was budgeted in the proprietary fund, but then later on, due to changes, actually happened in the government fund. So that's a pretty much a wash between those two. And then you'll see that we had budgeted $1,921,775.61, and we operated at $1,781,137.90. So we actually operated in the good by $140,000. Any questions there? And if you want to know, the biggest line item that you saved on was salaries and wages, and that was across the board in all the areas, mainly in the administrative part of it. So, any other questions?
Patty.
Yes.
The other thing that I would add, if the elected body remembers during the budget process, the board had decided not to raise the sewer and water rates in January, so part of that $183,000 charges for services is probably a reflection of the fact that we did not raise the sewer and water rates in January, as was originally discussed.
Well, actually, if you go -- if you want to know the actual number, if you go to page seven of the government fund, the $346,049.25 that's under debt services is what was the amount that should have hit the proprietary. So if, you know, if you add that in there, I think what it is, it's a timing issue is more of what it is.
Yeah, what Calvin's also talking about is the -- in January, the water and sewer rates rose up about 6% or something, and we deferred that.
Yeah. We did last year's budget with the anticipation of following the previously adopted sewer and water rate increases, and we didn't do that in January. So if there's any comparison of revenue collected versus revenue budgeted, there's probably a difference in part because we did not raise the sewer and water rates in January, although we projected to have done that last year.
Yeah, I know we projected it, but I also think we've been collecting more in the water and the sewer, if you were sitting there and comparing it. So even though the rates did not go up, actuality, we collected more than what was budgeted. I think some of that might be due to the fact that all our meters are working now, the whole system is functioning better.
Well, I think also, as you know, when we do the budget, we project, we try to project to some degree non-payment.
Yes.
So that we don't overestimate revenue and be offset by, for whatever reason, people not paying the bills.
And we've been doing better on the payment area, so that would have an impact, too, because we don't have the write-offs that we had originally projected. Any other questions? Just to let you all know that on -- we still have not scheduled when the auditor's coming. We've signed the engagement letter. I presume they'll be out either sometime toward the end of August or at the beginning of September, and then we will start getting all the information together there. We've done what we know that we can do ahead of time to be ready for the auditors. We went through and made sure everything was signed. We've started doing, as you can see, a lot of the accruals and everything, so the only thing that we have really left to do is inflows and outflows and accrue the interest. There's some interests where we have like five or six days that we have to accrue that we haven't done yet, but that will be the only changes that we'll have to make, probably, unless something, a bill comes in or something that we don't know about. And the other thing would be if we need to accrue any grant money that would happen to come in that we wouldn't know about, so, but that's moving along very nicely. You all have a good day, and if you have any questions, please let me know.
Thank you, Ms. Wagner. Chief?
Good evening, commissioners and Mr. Mayor. During the period of July 26 through the 8th of August, we responded to 197 calls for service. There was 32 hours of vacation used and 21 hours of training obtained by the officers. During that period, the officers took reports for traffic offense, two reports for possession of drugs, one for first-degree assault, one for second-degree assault, and malicious destruction of property. There were two arrests made for possession of heroin, one arrest for a second-degree assault, one for first-degree assault, and one for possession of methamphetamines with intent to distribute. No juvenile arrests were made at that time. In traffic enforcement, there were nine traffic stops made along Main Street, two along Queen Street, four along Mount Street, one on Pearl Street, and 32 on all the other roads. As a follow-up to programs that we've been working on, today, the new tasers were placed into service for the officers. We went from a first-generation taser that has been in service for maybe eight, nine years.
Eight or nine years.
To a new, top-of-the-line device that it gives the officers several options. When I say options, it does not mean that there's a switch for voltage, because I get that question off. There's nothing like that that exists. It just gives the officers a lot of different options to use the device and display the device prior to use. That device also is paired Bluetooth with body cameras, so if the device is ever activated, the body camera will automatically go on. In addition to that, with the body camera, the lights in the car are a trigger. If the lights in the car goes on, the body camera goes on. So you've seen in the news lately that other departments are having issues with officers turning the cameras on and off. There's audit trails that can tell you when the camera was turned on, turned off, what was done to it the entire time it was in use. So those are the things that are going into use in a department. The officers are excited about it. They look at it as a way of vindicating themselves from frivolous complaint that are time-consuming for me to investigate. So that is now, they're going to be up and running in the cars of the officers that are on duty now. In addition to that, the officers have placed into service license plates, driver's license scanners. They're devices in a car that help expedite a traffic stop. When an officer goes and gets your driver's license, your registration card, the device, they put it under scanner, just like you're in Walmart, that would read the price of the item. Well, it reads the information for the officer, automatically does a few checks, and provides some information. Those are also in service in the police cars. Lastly, the process for hiring. The market is not the greatest. It's very difficult right now, and it's been time-consuming to try to get to the bottom of some things in people's backgrounds. When a normal employer goes out to get an employee, they look for the best candidate they possibly can. That's what we're doing. We're trying to find that best candidate that we possibly can, and those that submit applications sometimes aren't the best that we can put forth, so we have to start from scratch. Right now, we have two that look promising, and that's the best I can say, is look promising, because tomorrow I might find something that completely eliminates them from the process, and they're just getting started in the process. So hopefully, we can get through it quickly and get those two people, you know, into our ranks and out on the street. And I said, "Lastly," however, I forgot one thing. Commissioner Warnock and I rushed in here real quick because we were at a photo shoot. Not for me, not for him.
Not for me either. We're going to break cameras.
But the Back the Blue is something that's important to all of us, you know. My officers always brag about the amount of support that they get from the public. You can find them always talking to somebody in a community, and that's a good sign because people are not afraid to come up to them and talk, talk about anything, give information, just be friends with their police department here in Rising Sun. So with that, we are heading into a new Back the Blue program. These are window clings that we will have here in town, in Town Hall, that will be on sale. Let me put the mug out of the way. One more. We'll also have refrigerator magnets or any magnet that you may want to put on your car, but they will be on sale here in Town Hall, and you will see a new Back the Blue campaign coming to our Facebook pages, social media pages. With that being said, I'm excited about it.
What is the cost to buy?
The cost, $2.
$2 for the clings and $3 for the magnets. All proceeds will go to the police department so that we're able to do not only the police breakfast, but also to be able to further promotional items or have things going on, so those funds will go directly to that.
Do we still have T-shirts left for?
Yes, we still have T-shirts, and that's what they were working on with the photo shoot, so they're going to debut the --
Just stole my thunder.
The new --
We do have T-shirts. We also have the Town of Rising Sun.
Bigger sizes this time.
The "I love Rising Sun" shirts, we still have those.
Yes, and we just ordered bigger sizes for not only the town shirts, but also for the Back the Blue shirts.
And on a side note, I've been halfway across the state, and I looked up, and there was a Rising Sun T-shirt, and it wasn't you this time, Lisa. So, they're getting around, I'm happy about it. I'm excited that we get so much support from the community, and I look forward to it continuing. With that, that's my report, unless there's any other questions.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Town administrator, do you have a report this evening?
Yes, let me get us set up where we need to be. We have a -- because of the upcoming election cycle, we have some things that we need to do our due diligence to report on tonight also. But the first thing that I wanted to cover, and it's listed on the tail end of the agenda on, starting at item 13, I just want to go over these more specifically because they're important, so I'm including them in my report. Our upcoming meeting schedule, we have a planning commission meeting on August 21st, 2017, at 6:30 PM to hear a planning and zoning appeals board case 17-01, which is the Way of Life Church is looking to open up a daycare for three- to four-year-olds from 9:00 in the morning until 12:00 in the afternoon, and then they want to do an after-school, before-and-after-school program for elementary-age children where parents could basically, if work schedules don't work for the parents, they could get them up to their Way of Life Church, they're kept there until a bus then takes them to school, and then vice versa. At the end of the school day, the bus would bring them back to Way of Life Church, and they would be watched until the parents could come and pick them up. This is very similar to what the Boys and Girls Club was doing to some degree. This is a light industrial area, and just like the Boys and Girls Club had to do back in 2011, a special exception and/or variance is required to be able to run the daycare in the light industrial area. So that is a -- the PZA case 1701, it will go before the planning commission on Monday, the 21st. The following night, Tuesday, the 22nd, is our normally-scheduled town meeting. Then Monday, the 28th, is the Board of Zoning Appeals review of that PZA case. And then, yes, Tuesday, August 29th, is a special public hearing for the 401 Telegraph Road Annexation hearing is scheduled for that night also.
And Calvin, that annexation was requested by the property owner.
That is correct. And we, I know there was some concern that the town had waited until the last minute to be dealing with this. We actually advertised all of this back in April on our social media pages and then advertisements in the newspaper, so it's been out there for a while. We are not able to schedule the hearing, however, until the Department of Planning or the state's clearinghouse gets a chance to look at it. So the hearing is scheduled for August 29th at 7:00 PM here at the Town Hall. The next item, Resolution 2017-11, has to do with the Board of Election Judges. This is a resolution that you can submit and vote on at the same meeting. It's generally a matter of business here that every time we have an election, we have to appoint a Board of Election Judges as per our charter, and so this resolution essentially is going to be reappointing three of the previous four Board of Election Judges. There's one vacancy current, unfortunately, that was due to the passing of longtime town resident Mary Lou Benjamin, who was previously on the board, so with her passing, there's now a vacancy on that board. So in order to keep moving forward with the election process, you have a resolution before you that you could act upon tonight, or you can let it sit until the next meeting.
What's the board's pleasure? Would they like to act upon Resolution 2017-10?
I think we should. Yeah.
Are we okay with this?
It's okay.
Okay, I'm going to go ahead and read it in the record. It's Resolution 2017-10, which is the Board of -- do I have the right one? It's the Election Board Appointment.
Yes.
Okay. And I'm going to skip the "whereas's" until it says, "Whereas the Town of Rising Sun Charter contains C6 titled Board of Election Judges and Election Process, which establishes the creation of a Board of Election Judges made up of three members plus one alternate member who will all serve two-year terms. And whereas the Board of Election Judges shall be in charge of all town elections, ballot preparation, counting of the ballots, and election verification. The Board of Election Judges shall decide all questions of registration of voters and the verification of candidates' qualifications. And whereas the mayor and commissioners wish to file three of the open -- fill three of the open positions on this board for the upcoming town elections to be held on October 16th, 2017. Therefore, the mayor and commissioners wish to appoint the following persons to serve on the Board of Election Judges and to serve in this position until the second Tuesday of March 2019. Mr. Stephen Miller, Ms. Melissa Copenhagen, Ms. Kimberly Widener. Therefore, be it further resolved that the mayor and commissioners of the Town of Rising Sun passed, approved, and adopted this resolution on this eighth day of August 2017." Could I get a motion to approve the resolution?
I make a motion to approve.
Second. All right. Any discussion? The only discussion I'd have is up at the top. Calvin, we need to change it from Board of Zoning to Board of Election, which should be fine. It's just a clerical point. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. Calvin?
All right, the next item that I want to bring up is something that I want to bring to the attention of the board and emphasize to the board and to the general public. There are a lot of things really starting to take shape in the Town of Rising Sun. We're getting a lot of development interest. I can tell you to some degree, you can see when the economy began I can tell you to some degree, you can see when the economy begins to turn around because people start to talk about investing in their own properties. And we're getting people that are talking about putting additions on their homes, large decks on their homes, wanting to do a variety of things. And sometimes those items require a variance and/or a special exception to be able to do that. But as the board has been reporting on in the past, we have several vacancies in some of our boards. And it's making it very difficult for us to be able to deal with those. I'm bringing up the page so the residents can see this. It makes it very difficult for the town to conduct business if we don't have completely seated board members. And so there are four boards in particular that we need to continue to work to get filled. One of them is the Planning Commission. And the Planning Commission is very important because if you look at the situation of Way of Life Church, we're talking about an issue that's dealing with children. And there are provisions in the town code that enable the town to protect and make decisions that are in the best interest of not only the community, but in this case, the children that would be there at the facility. If we cannot seat a Planning Commission Board, we can't hold on to applications forever here. And under state law, there's a time limit of when you receive an application, you have to deal with that application in a timely manner, or the application is deemed approved as submitted. So what that comes down to is we gotta be very careful about making sure we fill these boards because we could get burned by applications coming in that may or may not be in the best interest of the community and the residents at large. But because we can't seat people on the boards, we can't deal with the applications timely. And so in essence, they would default to being approved automatically. And that's just not a good situation for the town to be in. Over, I know Commissioner Braun is gonna talk about it a little bit under her report, but we've had a very difficult time over the last couple of months holding Planning Commission meetings because of a lack of quorum. And right now, the Planning Commission is doing a lot of good work at trying to change some of our zoning codes to get them up to date. We've talked about this before. The Town of Rising Sun has, back in the days, the late 1990s and early 2000s, we did a lot of borrowing of codes from other communities. And our code will actually make references to other communities because it was not cleaned up when it was adopted. Not only that, we have zoning districts in our code that don't even exist in the Town of Rising Sun. So it's just not a good way to be doing business. And the Planning Commission is charged with cleaning a lot of that up. So on the Planning Commission, we have two positions open. The Planning Commission meets the first and third Monday of every month. Currently, they are working on very important updates to the town's zoning and land development codes. The board has a significant impact on shaping the economic development of this community. We've done polls here online where we've asked people, what do you want to see in the community? And they say Dunkin' Donuts, things for kids, you know, movie theaters, bowling alleys, good restaurants. That all starts with a productive and efficient Planning Commission. So if we don't have board members, it's hard to meet those expectations and wants that the community has. The other board that has vacancies is the Board of Zoning Appeals that has one position open. The Board of Zoning Appeals is the body established to hear appeals of decisions rendered by the zoning administrator and to put unclear provisions in the zoning ordinance, decide on applications by landowners to permit buildings or land uses which vary from the zoning regulations. The board has a major influence in ensuring proper land use that is beneficial to all property owners. This is a board that if we get our zoning code straightened out and get the right members on it, this is a board that stops streets that are being built that are too small, that vehicles can't pass. And we have that in our community. This is what stops good stormwater issues that happened in communities in the past. This is how we prevent those mistakes from continuing to happen is by having good Planning Commissions and Board of Zoning Appeals Boards. So we have a vacancy on that. The Ethics Board is another board that has one position open. And the Ethics Board is the body established to oversee the town's ethics code and to ensure compliance with the policies set forth in the ethics code. The board reviews all ethics forms, reviews and investigates all possible violations of any ethics code provisions and other duties as set forth in the town code. The fourth board that we have open, and we talked about it, we filled three of the four positions, but we still have one open position on the Board of Election Judges. And as we talked about, the Board of Election Judges is a body established to oversee all town elections, ballot preparation, counting of ballots, and election verification. The Board of Election Judges shall decide all questions of registration of voters and the verification of candidate qualifications. So to the residents out there watching this, if you want to get involved in town government and learn a little bit about it and be able to effectuate positive change in the community, this is a great opportunity to join these kinds of boards to be able to do that. The town election process, as you recall, a couple of years ago, the town charter was changed to hold elections every two years. So 2017 is a election year. The, there are currently three positions open on the elected body, the mayor's position and two commissioners' seats are open. The qualifications are the mayor and commissioners shall be citizens of the United States, at least 25 years of age at the time of their election to office, qualified voters of the town, and bona fide residents of said town for at least one year preceding the date of their election, and shall be free of any record of criminal violations other than minor traffic violations and other such misdemeanors punishable by fine. The terms for those positions are four years. The, any candidate seeking to run for office, there's a couple of things you have to do. There's a candidate registration form that you fill out, there's a financial disclosure form that has to be filled out, and there's a campaign finance form that has to be filled out. Note that on the campaign finance forms, there are different reporting cycles in which you have to submit that information for that. And that is on the agenda. Anyone who didn't pick up the agenda yet, you can, you can see everything that I'm reading out on this list. The forms will be available for candidates next Friday, August 18th. We're meeting with the Ethics Board between then and now to make sure that the, those forms are where they need to be legally, and they will be available next Friday for candidates to come forward. It's important to note that no candidate will be listed on the official ballot until all required documents are fully completed and submitted and verified by the Rising Sun Ethics Board and Board of Election Judges. Failure to comply with the campaign finance and ethics requirements may result in removal from the ballot and/or disqualification from office. Voter registration, in order to vote in the town elections, you have to be a citizen, you have to be at least 18 years of age, and you have to be a resident of the town at least 30 days preceding the election. Voter registration, all qualified persons wishing to register to vote shall do so at the Cecil County Election Board and as provided for by law. The election schedule, the town election. The town election is Monday, October 16th, 2017. The polls will open up at 8:00 and close at 8:00 PM in the evening. We will have the electronic voting machines again. That seems to have been very successful the last two times we've done that, so we will have the electronic voting machines. Voter registration deadline is Friday, September 15th, 2017, is at 5:00 is the last day to register to vote. Remember to make sure you're registering at the, at the county election board or you go down and update your, if it's already on your driver's license, you just gotta make sure that you checked off that you wanted to be registered to vote also. The last day to register as a candidate in our elections is Friday, September 15th at 6:00 PM. The change we made in the charter a couple of years ago was to accommodate people who might be at work and they're trying to race home to put their applications in to run for office. We keep the Town Hall open until 6:00 PM on that Friday evening to accommodate people who want to run for office. The last day to request an absentee ballot, if you're a voter and you're not gonna be around on the day of the election, you can request an absentee ballot. The last day to do that is Friday, October 6th at 2:00 PM. And all absentee ballots need to be turned in by the close of the election on election night, October 16th. Some quick items, paving, our Public Works employees are out preparing for paving work, sidewalk work. The contractors are cutting the grass at the parks. They've been doing a pretty good job at that. They've been doing it on a timely basis. I know our Public Works Department is very happy with the flexibility they now have in their schedules of not having to chase raindrops or trying to get grass cut. They could just focus on doing the paving and sidewalk repairs. As you notice around town, our Public Works employees have been trying to spruce up our intersections. You will see handicap blue paint that has been put in front of the handicap access ramps. Believe it or not, we did get some complaints about that from some people that were complaining about us painting those areas blue. But it does, it does look a lot cleaner and a lot nicer. So that concludes my report.
Thank you, Town Administrator. I don't believe we have Historical Preservation Commission or any, do we have any old business? Any new business? All right, moving into my report, I wanted to say how important it is, you know, Calvin just talked about the Planning Commission. And a side story for you, my first entry into the Town of Rising Sun was wanting to be on the Planning Commission. And the former mayor that sat in this spot and the board at the time decided that I wasn't a good candidate. So I decided to run for office because of that. But at that time, I really wanted to be involved in the Planning Commission and I was denied. But I really wanted to be involved in it, so.
He's not bitter about it, is he?
No, I'm not bitter. I mean, I ended up winning the election, so I mean, I guess that's all right. Moving forward, I wanted to say that I had an excellent interview with WXCY and Brad Austin. I want to thank him again for inviting me out to the fair to be able to interview. And it was an excellent experience. I also wanted to say that Commissioner Braun mentioned any of these items that you'd like to purchase, whether it's a T-shirt or whether it is a Back to Blue sticker or a Back to Blue T-shirt. You can come here to Town Hall. We're open from 9:00 to 5:00, so they're able to purchase them there. I actually have had a former commissioner, Commissioner Hamilton, who served back in the 80s and 90s, and she has sent me checks to purchase T-shirts because she is one of them so bad. So she served and she lives in Florida now, and she paid for the shipping and we ended up sending her some T-shirts. So she sent me some pictures of her and her kids wearing the T-shirts, so that was really cool of her. I also wanted to say that the School Drive that is organized by the anonymous people who give a damn about the community has served their 300th and 80th kid. So that's really, really impressive. These are anonymous people that are organized and Lisa and the Herald helps gather them together to do a fantastic job to help these kids that are in need. So if you do have items that you still want to donate, just drop by the Herald, I'm sure she'll accept them. If you want to donate money, accept them as well. So I also wanted to say a big shout out, my last shout out is to Jane Belmeyer, who's gonna be celebrating 15 years with the wig. That is amazing. I am sure that you have handled many town meetings and I am by far your most favorite as mayor that you've ever had to deal with. Probably not, but congrats to you as well. Moving forward into Commissioner's comments, Commissioner Autenreth?
I have no, no comments.
All right, Commissioner Braun?
Yes, I just wanted to say that last night, we passed a motion in the Planning Commission to set a minimum quorum of three to try to compensate for the lack of attendance. So from now on, for whatever period we needed to exist, three people will be able to conduct business.
Thank you, Commissioner Braun, and thanks so much for all your hard work, the Planning Commission. I know it can be frustrating, especially with trying to get members to volunteer and donate their time, so thank you. Commissioner Pearson?
On behalf of the Fire Company, they're having their second annual Sportsman's Bash on September the 23rd. It's a fundraiser for them. A lot of people wondered where the carnival went. Well, the carnival wasn't making any money, so they're trying this avenue. The forms are available at the firehouse, or if you need some, you can contact me. Tickets are available, and I think it's $50 for a ticket for the auction and $25 to get in. And it's also sponsored by Ducks Unlimited, so if you have any questions, you know, contact me or contact the Fire Company, okay? Just a little side note here. Please don't complain about the ridiculous things in this town. Painting those blue for the handicap serves a true purpose. I mean, why would anybody complain about something like that? I mean, I could see if they were a very unique color. But blue is the common color for handicap or disabled spots. And, you know, please, find something real to complain about. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Pearson. Commissioner Warnock?
Calvin, if you can bring up the pictures? So I have a family slideshow to show tonight. No, I'm kidding.
Vacation pictures?
Yeah. So this is me in a Mickey Mouse hat. No, I'm kidding.
Just the Grand Canyon of-
I was trying to, there we go. Maybe just click one of the pictures, because I'm not really sure what.
Do you have one you want to start at?
Just the first one's fine.
No, it's not.
And that concludes our meeting, thank you, guys.
It won't show up on the screen over here.
Just, no, don't, instead of hitting slideshow up there, why not just pick one of the, just double-click on a picture? There we go. Okay, so the project at the park is coming along. The section from the bridge to the culvert is pretty much completed at this point. And actually, if you want to advance, let you know, go ahead and advance some pictures. What you're seeing here is kind of like the early phases of it. And as we roll through, you'll see like it's progressing, it's, you have the section, so what you hear, right here is the section near the culvert. And before, there was kind of a dog leg into one of the two pipes of the culvert under Hopewell Road. And they've cleared that section out, so it's a nice clear shot into the culvert now. If you want to advance. And this was before it was, this section was completed, you can see the erosion on the banks to the left, in particular, very close in frame. So if you want to advance through, keep going. So what they're doing is they're actually pumping the water around the area they're working in, so they're bypassing the stream. And so they're damming up basically two sections or creating two dams in the stream. And they pump the water around the project area so that they can do the digging and grading they need to do. What if I keep going? I should have probably queued these out or called these out a little more. So what you can see here, the area that's real dry is actually an area of the riffles. And then just past that is actually one of the pools. And keep going? All right, keep going, okay. Oh, so this is actually something interesting. We, for some reason, herons seem to like our Ecotune projects. We had a heron at the dog park when it was under construction, and we've had a heron at this park. Apparently, when they drain it down, it, the water levels get low, there's fish, like minnows and stuff, and the heron comes in and eats while they're working. And this was one day after they had let the stream flow again, he was in the riffles, eating things out of the riffles, so I don't know exactly what he was eating. But we're gonna go ahead and advance and we should get to some of the, just keep going through. Okay, so this is actually today. And what you'll see is the section from the road to the bridge is completed. There's two step pools kind of in the middle there, if you keep going. Oh, sorry, keep going. Oh, sorry, keep going. I was trying to get a decent angle of the heron. I just grabbed all the pictures. I didn't get a chance to go through them because we had modeling shoot. If you want to keep going? Okay, so here we go. So this is actually, if you remember that one section of the bank that was showing a lot of erosion, you'll see that's now gone. It's a much gentler slope into the stream. This will make it a lot easier for the kids to get in access. We won't have them, you know, tearing up the sides and stuff, the stream bank falling into the creek. You'll also see that there's like some areas that are a little deeper than others. And then there's the combination of the pools and riffles, as we've talked about before.
What is the stuff on the banks, Dave? It looks like burlap.
It basically is burlap. Calvin, if you keep advancing through, keep going. So you'll see that that burlap is actually holding the bank in place, and you'll see that as of today, it's starting green up.
Grass grows up through it and it stays in place?
Yeah, so, yep. And I believe, I'm not sure if the burlap actually stays long-term or not. I think it does, yeah, I think it'll degrade over time, is basically what it is.
Did they bring in some new stone, too, it looks like?
Yes. So all the materials brought in on site have to be pre-screened, so they have to get them from a vendor that is approved, that, already by Army Corps of Engineers for material to go into the stream, so it can't have any contaminants or chemicals or anything like that. So, you know, this is all very heavily regulated, what they're doing. There's Cecil County and MDE and Army Corps of Engineers are all, you know, keeping an eye on how things are done, what materials. There's a checklist they have to go through. All the materials that come on site are actually recorded and turned into the county, which ultimately gets turned into the state and the federal government. But, you know, as of today, we're starting to already see a greening up of the banks, which I'm really happy about because, I mean, it's only been going on for about two, three weeks, and we've already got green again, which, you know, I wasn't expecting to see any green along there for probably a few more weeks. If you can advance through, we actually have some closer-up pictures of the pools and the riffles. So this is kind of the riffle section, and there's the, so what you'll see is along the edge of the pools, there's actually large stones that are meant to hold the bank in place. And so there's a, you know, it's, it's an interesting project. If you get a chance, I highly recommend going down and taking a look at the sections that are completed, or if you manage to wait till it's completed. And we'll probably figure out something to do once it's completed in entirety. But, so, anyway. That's, that project, kind of an update on that. The other big thing this week is, actually, I guess really next week, is moving in the park, is next Friday, the 18th. And we are showing Seng, and it's actually because the first one got rained out, it happens to be the first one this year is at Kilby's, assuming, of course, that, you know, we don't get into rainstorm.
Get a monster.
Yeah. The good thing is where we set up over there, even if it does rain, as long as it stops raining, we can still set up because it won't be an area that's like flooded heavily. Where we normally set up, when it rained the other day, it was actually a pretty good flow of water down through there for a few hours afterwards. It really wouldn't have been conducive to run electricity through it. So I think with that, that is my, all my report on tonight.
Thank you, Commissioner Warnock.
Thank you.
All right. Is there anything else to come before the board this evening? All right. Hearing nothing? Could I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved?
Second.
It's been moved in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.